I will call to order the Monday, December 14th meeting of the Verona Common Council. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we'll have the roll call. Ms. Lick, please.
Alderperson Diaz.
Here.
Alderperson Doyle.
Here.
Alderperson Linder.
Here.
Alderperson McGilvery.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Steiner.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
Present.
Alderperson yours.
Here.
We do have a quorum. Everyone is here. Thank you for that. Next on the agenda, we have public comment. On the agenda this evening, we do have one other item later on, Agenda Item 9A, 9A6, which requires a public hearing. That'll be specific to that topic of a revision to the Code of Ordinances regarding private streets. So, the public comment portion that we have now is open for you to discuss any Agenda item other than that one. So, we are open for public hearing. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come forward. And if you would, as we did for the Planning Commission, please state your name and your address. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chris Berry. Address 908 Forest View Drive. And I'm here to speak about the Candinas development proposal that'll be discussed later tonight. And I've already discussed this matter with many of you via phone or email, and thank you for your receptivity to my comments. I've written down what I have to say so that I don't waste your time or others' time here. You'll hear probably from several others on this matter tonight, so I'd like to highlight just what I consider two of the more important reasons why I don't think the proposal should move forward in the state that it's currently in. I live on one of the lots on Forest View Drive that shares a property line border with Candinas. It's not an issue to me that there's any planned development at all for this property, but instead, as stated in the letter that I and 103 other Verona residents signed and sent to the Planning Commission and City Council last week, a primary objection is the presence of multifamily rental housing in the proposal. One of the reasons is that it amounts to an unprecedented and unanticipated zoning change in the Candinas lot, and that adversely affects the neighborhood, especially the 16 single-family residential properties that share a property line border with Candinas. There hasn't been any multifamily rental housing developed in Verona in recent memory that involved a zoning change like the one that we'd see with the Candinas property, which is currently zoned for commercial activity only under Dane County rules. Those recent multifamily developments have all been part of the original concept of their neighborhoods or built on land that was already zoned for multifamily housing. The ones that come to mind are the Seneg Ridge Apartments on Acker Lane, Harmony Hills, and Cathedral Point condominiums. Certainly when my wife and I bought our house seven months ago, we didn't imagine that we would see several 33-foot tall townhomes 40 feet over the property line of our backyard. That was exactly what we had moved to Verona to escape from in our previous residence in southwest Madison. We did our homework with the city planner's office, learning about Candinas current zoning and hearing what the office knew of any development plans, which at the time was nothing. And I can tell you that if we had known of a project like this, we would've looked elsewhere. And that brings me to the second reason I'd like to discuss. The Candinas development proposal is already having an impact on the buying and selling behavior in the single-family residential neighborhood bordering it. In talking about this issue with my neighbors, I spoke with Larry and Joanne Silver, who own the house at 269 Military Ridge Drive, which also shares a property line border with Candinas. They put their house on the market a few weeks ago and heard from numerous people at open houses who were nervous about the development. In the end, they had to accept a lowball offer because potential buyers were so skittish about the Candinas development. That behavior trickles down to the rest of the neighborhood, especially anybody else who wants to put their house up for sale, since realtors recommend listing prices based on recent listings and sales in the neighborhood. In the end, Candinas stands to benefit financially from the development. That's the goal after all, and I don't begrudge them that. But it seems patently unfair for a financial loss or burden to be placed on the shoulders of the homeowners around the property with little to no tangible or provable benefits to them. For many, their homes are the biggest investments that they'll ever make, and those investments could be diminished by circumstances somewhat out of their control. And I say somewhat because we have the opportunity to make our voices heard in this forum. Finally, I'd like to mention how much my hope in a collaborative environment on this project has unfortunately eroded. The revised plan presented by Candinas at a November neighborhood meeting had few changes from its initial July proposal, and what little had changed did not address neighbor feedback from the August neighborhood meeting. The only change, if you're keeping score, was converting the 24-unit apartment building into 20 townhomes that are the same height and now closer to the south and west property lines than they were before. The further revised plan from Candinas and the developers to the city last Friday, December 11th, again showed only minor changes: the removal of two out of the 20 townhomes and a revision of some roofs to be downward facing towards the property, excuse me, towards the property line. To me and I believe to others, this represents even less of a change and a seeming disregard for the repeated feedback of not only the neighbors, but also the Planning Commission at their meeting last week. I know there's no matter up for a vote tonight regarding the proposal, but I hope the council will make it clear to Candinas again that the scale of this plan and its details isn't sustainable. This isn't the relationship I hoped to have with my neighbor, and I hope it will improve with consideration of my and many others' feedback. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak during public comment?
Hi, good evening. I've also written down what I have to say tonight. My name is Anya Holland Berry, and I reside at 908 Forest View Drive. I have already stated my opposition to the Candinas concept plan several times through my letters and phone calls to council members, my public comments at the previous city council meeting regarding the first two concept plans. I also stated my opposition during the two neighborhood meetings held with Marcus Candinas, and most recently through my signature on the neighborhood opposition letter, which holds 104 signatures total. My purpose tonight is to summarize the main points I adamantly oppose in Candinas newest third concept plan. During the previous two neighborhood meetings, the few dozen neighbors present made it clear to Mr. Candinas that the scale of this project, especially the inclusion of rental multifamily housing backing up to the yards of some of the 16 properties surrounding Candinas, was unprecedented and worrisome. We asked him to scale back the project, concentrate development in the center of the five-acre property, and remove the multifamily housing. Unfortunately, this advice is still not heated and does nothing to alleviate the concerns of neighbors. Indeed, in his third revision, he has only reduced the number of townhouses down by two, and the rental housing still borders existing properties. Again, this does nothing in terms of listening to the Planning Commission's advice last week and the 104 neighbors who signed the opposition letter. These changes are not significant but are simply shifting little by little while continuing to place burden on residents. While Mr. Candinas has the right to respectfully and sustainably build on his property, the magnitude of this plan, and especially its inclusion of multifamily rental housing so close to our properties, benefits only Mr. Candinas. He has stated that he wants multifamily housing to appease the banks. While this plan financially profits Mr. Candinas, the neighbors bear a burden. As seen by the 104 signatures on our neighborhood letter, the opposition is widespread. Not only are we concerned about our property values decline, but we never would have bought our home if we thought that something this unexpected and unprecedented could happen, and yes, we did our research on all the zoning beforehand. This plan would personally destroy everything I hold dear about our home backyard, and I am also concerned about the walking path right behind our yards and the safety issues surrounding that. Most of the bordering properties are not fenced, and many have children playing in the yards. We have already asked Mr. Candinas to take out that walking path three times, and it is still part of the plan. This third revision does not take into respect the neighborhood concerns that we have voiced multiple times. We worry about the spirit of collaboration when Mr. Candinas has refused to make changes as discussed by the, or as suggested by the 100-plus neighbors and city officials. I would also ask the city council members to consider how many empty leases Verona has for retail in its more commercial areas. I do not have confidence that retail stuck in the middle of an established single-family neighborhood would thrive, considering retail and office space by Gray's Tidewell House on Main Street and beyond have yet to be filled. In conclusion, we urge Mr. Candinas to remove the multifamily housing, scale back the project significantly in order to respectfully consider its neighbors and the property itself. I also exhort the council members to seriously consider the 104 signatures on the neighborhood opposition letter. After sending the letter, we had additional people request to sign and urged them to contact representatives directly. While most of the signatures are from the immediate surrounding neighborhood, there are several from other neighborhoods who had heard about the plan and requested to sign. While there is no vote tonight, I ask that the city council seriously consider not moving forth with this proposal until the multifamily housing bordering the single-family owner-occupied homes be removed. The change in zoning to allow the multifamily housing in an already established neighborhood is unprecedented in Verona, as our examples in our neighborhood opposition letter demonstrate. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
My name is Dave Ward, and I live at 335 Military Ridge Drive. I'm also speaking about the Candinas proposal. I live on the corner of Forest View and Military Ridge, so I'm at the corner of where the proposed apartment buildings would be. The proposed buildings would actually kind of end sort of kitty-corner to me, so next door to me on Military Ridge is where the first building would be abutting the property. I really don't have a whole lot more to say beyond what Chris and Anya have. I've been attending the meetings that Mr. Candinas has had, and I was there for the, we had a meeting to draft the letter that has been signed by over 100 residents. And I just wanted to make sure that my voice was heard, to let you guys know that I'm strongly opposed to this, this development, and that it would have a negative impact on both my property value and basically the house and its surroundings that my family enjoys in the neighborhood. And my feeling is that, we did our research too. We bought our house 14 years ago, and we looked into the zoning of the property, and we're confident that that commercial zoning would preclude the building of the, any kind of proposal that decides that Mr. Candinas is proposing. And my feeling is that the privacy of that lot was priced into the value of the home when we purchased it. So, I'm very strongly opposed to a change that would allow any type of multifamily housing in that, in that area. I just don't think it's the right fit for Verona. There's other places for that type of development to happen. And I just wanted to register those concerns. Thanks.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm at liberty to discuss the 142 Paoli Street at this particular time.
Yes.
Because they're not segmented.
Yep.
My name is Ken Dixon. I live at 123 Paoli Street. I've lived there for 44 years, raised two kids. I'm quite proud of the neighborhood. Paoli Street has come a long way over the years. It has a wonderful center park. It's a headstone of the whole building, of the whole, the street. We're really proud of it. We'd like to maintain the character that we've had for a number of years. It was really improved quite nicely when the state turned over Highway 69 to Verona, and it went back to the full Paoli Street address or title. I have a number of concerns, but probably the largest concern is the density that's proposed for the building on that site. Being a total site of about an acre and a half, of which how much I don't know is allocated to that building, but I believe the standard is about 12 units per acre. In here with 36 or 34, whatever is currently proposed for that site, is two or three times what it should be. I would like to certainly confirm the position that the Plan Commission has when they voted amongst themselves unanimously to reject this project. I don't know if it's proper to ask how many people from Paoli Street are here to support this position. May I do that?
We don't recommend you doing that, but I think we can see the support here. And if we've heard from a number of people, and if they desire to speak, this is the public comment portion. We would encourage them to speak.
Okay, thank you. And finally, I would hope that the speculation on a small lot wouldn't really outweigh the feelings of the members of that community that have been there for so many years. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, this public hearing isn't specific to Item 9A6, because I'm here to discuss Item 9A3, 142 Paoli Street.
You can make comments now.
Well, will there be another opportunity as it comes up for discussion here?
No.
So, this is it?
This is it, yep.
Good.
Yep.
All right. I'd like to address Item 9A3, please. 142 Paoli Street. I was here a week ago presenting to the Plan Commission. My name is Tim Critter. I'm with TJK Design Build, and I reside at 612 West Main Street in Madison. We were here a week ago presenting the project at 142 Paoli Street on behalf of Bill Dresser. I don't think that there was any surprise that generally the entire project, I really think, came down to this density question. I think there was a consensus among Plan Commission members that overall the concept in the general development was acceptable. The mixed-use, the splitting of the retail from the apartments, and the way that the site was structured, I think everyone felt generally comfortable with. And again, it came down to this density issue. There were four recommendations that the planning staff had recommended to the Plan Commission at the time. The direction we got back from Plan Commission was for this board or this council not to recommend approval as the project was presented. And that's how it came to you this evening. We fully understand that you have the opportunity now to reconsider that position by the Plan Commission. One of the recommendations that stood out to me was that the Plan Commission recommend this project was appropriate at 32 units, was the fourth and final recommendation. The Plan Commission asked that we go back and work with the planning staff in terms of the project and whatnot, and that is really what has occurred for the last four months. The architecture is not a question. I don't think the massing, the setbacks, the ability for us to work with the staff and screen the project and provide buffering from the neighbors, that's not the issue. The issue is the density. So, I'm asking this council to consider the recommendations of the planning staff and approve 32 units for the apartment building this evening. All the rest of it, we can effectively work with the neighbors and work with the staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Good evening. Sue Lennon, excuse me, Sue Lennon, 127 Paoli Street. And I have been living on that street for 36 years, along with the rest of my long-term neighbors. And there was a few things I wanted to talk about, but just listening to what this gentleman had to say. The density problem is a huge issue, but so is the rest of the project as it stands right now. Two buildings with one giant asphalt driving parking lot in the middle of it. As was mentioned to the Plan Commission, there is also water runoff issues. We are concerned about that. We're not opposed to this lot of land being developed. We know it's going to happen. We just hope that it happens to, it just happens that it will fit in with our neighborhood. I don't think retail fits in that neighborhood. Not the lighting, not the parking, not the traffic flow. Any kind of housing, we would not be opposed to, at least if it wasn't as high density. Senior housing, townhouses like they said. Duplex, that was some of the things that the Planning Commission said could be developed right away. The density is a huge issue, but it isn't the only issue. And having, like I said, been there for 36 years, we've actually rebuilt our house 15 years ago after a house fire, and we're very happy with the neighborhood. We've seen it improve over our last 36 years. And again, like other folks have mentioned, property values and what will happen with that. So, definitely opposed to this project with the density and with the two buildings with the giant parking lot right in the middle. It just does not seem to fit with the residential neighborhood that we have right now. So, thank you for listening.
Thank you. If there's anyone else that wishes to speak, you can work your way up to the front.
Hello. My name is Rachel Holloway. I work with JSD Professional Services on behalf of Marcus Candinas. I just wanted to speak briefly, given that there's some members of the public here for this project, and just highlight a few things that I think you have in your packets but want to make, make sure everybody here is aware of these changes to the concept plan that the city's received. As you know, Mr. Candinas is proposing to improve his private property, about five acres, a rather large lot. And we've been working with him on the concept plans, which are still, you know, in the process of changing and being tweaked in response to comments from the city and from neighbors. So, it's an ongoing process, but in the current version of the site plans that we have, which are still conceptual, it's important to note that the changes have been made in response to comments received from neighbors, and that's certainly a good process. Specifically, the things I'd like to point out are that the unit, the total number of residential units for the project have been reduced by about a quarter, 25%, since the first concept plan was put out. That's definitely been in response to comments received. The development density has also gone down. The portion of the site that's proposed for multifamily residential has gone down from, by our calculations, 12 units per acre to about nine. So, just the intensity of development has been adjusted in response to comments as well. And the total developed area on the site, you know, the amount proposed for buildings and pavement is well below what would be allowed under current county zoning, and I believe also what would be typical of the city under your commercial zoning districts. That's certainly something, it's an intention for the site to keep that ratio low. The walking path has also been removed in response to comments and concerns over public safety, so that's an important thing to clarify, given that not everybody's aware of that. That's all I wanted to say right now, and just, we still look forward to working with the city and continuing this process. You have a process outlined in your zoning ordinance that we can, we'll keep going through it for plan development, and we'll look forward to any comments and questions, if you have any later in the meeting. We'll be here to answer those and address concerns.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Hello.
My name is Marcus Candinas. It was Rachel. She beat me up here. Yeah, I just wanted to say that we're still really excited about working on this project that we have, or that we'd like to do. We would like to continue to incorporate premium design, good architectural features, premium materials, and build something that will fit in with the city and with the neighborhood, become an important fabric, important, good part of the fabric of the city that we have. So, if there's any questions later on, I'd love to have the opportunity to answer them.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, Alders, my name is Bill Dresser. I'm one of the owners at 142 Paoli Street. And I just wanted to, I guess, mention that I think the way we're approaching the development on this lot is probably the best suited type of development for the lot. We've pushed everything back along the bike path, with the exception of a small commercial building, which we envisioned to have a small cafe, coffee shop, which in my opinion would be a great place for the neighborhood to gather and meet and greet. I would think it'd be a benefit for the neighborhood to have something like that. Also, the people that work in the industrial park could stop and have a cup of coffee and chat things over. I mean, after all, it's a community, very strong community down there, and I would think that they would welcome the opportunity to sit down, have a cup of coffee, and talk things over. We have, the density issue, I think, is something that is a kind of an ongoing issue, obviously, in Verona right now, but if you look at the national trends throughout the country, I think you're looking at higher density, just because it's getting harder and harder to develop land, and there's more and more people to house. We've pushed the apartment building as far away from the Paoli Street neighborhood as possible, and I think if this proposal, for some reason, is not granite, I guess the other options on that lot would bring the housing units closer to the existing neighbors. So, I just think we're looking at the best approach possible here. If the neighbors are concerned about the apartment building and its tenants being too close to Paoli Street, we're as far away as we can possibly get right now. So, I think it's a good development, and I think it will add to the fabric of the neighborhood. It is a great neighborhood, and we intend to keep it that way. We're certainly not trying to damage it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. David Jackson. I live at 303 Military Ridge Drive. I've lived there for 17 years, and like everyone else that surrounds a property and even others that were opposed to this. And I think the latest plan that came forth actually validates our concern more than any others, because if you look at those drawings very clearly, you can see how closely that that, these buildings are going to be to our backyards. And it's probably going to look like that maybe 30 years, because the trees, not a single tree, evergreen tree that surrounds that property on that drawing, is even close to being that high. So, that's the best it might look in like 30 years. But you can see clearly the proximity of the buildings. I think none of us bought our property. You know, we're told that something like this would never be on that property, at least from a residential area. So, I just want to voice my concern that I am opposed to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Hello. Mike Lennon. I live at 127 Paoli. I just wanted to express my concern that the Paoli neighborhood compared to most of the other areas in Verona and outside Verona is a very low-density neighborhood, which is kind of, seems like it's kind of unusual to have a low-density neighborhood this deep within a sort of a semi-urban setting. But that's what it is, and if that changes, a very significant characteristic of that neighborhood will automatically change fairly dramatically, based on the incursion of like a large multifamily unit, and even the retail, the retail idea. I would much rather see that particular lot go with something that fit the neighborhood, single-family, townhouse, senior, whatever, than to go in this particular direction, which really is, is more a change to the characteristic of the neighborhood itself. Now, we live, we live a little bit ways away from the lot, but we know the neighbors that are going to be most directly affected by this. We know that they're very unhappy with the idea of having this particular construction occur there. And we also live in close proximity to other multifamily units, not very far away, just on the other side of the, of the bike trail. And those are fine. There's nothing wrong with them, but we do see that that is a very definite characteristic difference between that section of land and ours in the Paoli neighborhood. We'd kind of like to keep that in the, in the more of the low-density, undeveloped, if you want to call it that, characteristic. So, I just wanted to make that my concern for this particular project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment?
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. I have two items I'd like to talk to you about tonight.
Tim, I'm sorry. Could you just do your name and address?
Oh, sorry. Tim Hagan, 143 Peoli Street.
Thank you.
So the first item I'd like to talk to you about is my tax bill that I got in the mail today. Thank you very much, council members. It is the same amount as it was last year, so I appreciate your hard efforts in making sure my tax bill did not go up. So, number one, thank you very much. The second item I'd like to talk to you about is Agenda Item Number 9-3, Resolution R-15-063, mixed-use project for 142 Peoli Street. I live right across the street from this project, our proposed project, and there's a couple of concerns that I have. As you've heard a couple of my fellow neighbors talk about, I think it's very important to talk about, we're a very proud residential neighborhood. We're not part of the downtown district. We're a residential neighborhood that's been there for a long time. And I think it's very important for some of the newer members of the council to realize that what was there was a two-story, old rundown house with a clear rebuilding on the back of that property. So it was all residential to begin with. And what they're trying, or what the proposed project is, is they're going to take that property that was once a house and put thirty-six units and a commercial property on that property. One point six acres is what I believe the total acreage is. So the Planning Commission meeting last week voted, it was a unanimous verdict on the Planning Commission, they voted against the project as it was proposed. What my neighbor just passed out to you was, all twenty-six residents, there's twenty-six residents on Peoli Street, twenty-four of the residents adamantly propose the project as it was put towards us on a neighborhood meeting. The Planning Commission voted against it. So I wasn't going to speak tonight, but it came to mind that you guys could actually accept or disregard what the Planning Commission voted against and decide that it was an okay project. So that's why I'm here speaking to you tonight. Again, Peoli Street neighborhood is a proud residential neighborhood, and we want to make sure that, you guys know that we're not part of the downtown district. A couple of questions that I have for the council that I think is very important that we ask the question is, on page twenty-two of the proposal that was presented to the city, is why is there a future property line that divides the residential part, the thirty-six-unit residential part, with the commercial part? I believe that is a huge question that really needs to be answered. I've asked the question, and nobody has answered the question. Why is that future property line in the plans? To me, and to the rest of the neighbors that signed that proposal, it seems to me, it seems to us, that that property is going to be divided someday, so that the commercial part on the front part of the property is different, or it's a different parcel than the backside of the property. And if you actually take a look at it, that's, I'm guessing about less than one acre. So if the proposal goes through, that's thirty-six units on less than one acre. And that is three times the amount of what the city ordinance says say. As far as the commercial portion, I don't want to repeat myself, I've talked to the Planning Commission about this, but the commercial property, there's four vacant commercial properties on the south side of the stoplights right now. 109, 204, 251, and 303 South Main Street are all vacant commercial properties. Why do we want to add three more commercial properties on the south side of Verona that actually takes away from the downtown district? That, to me, just does not make any sense. In closing, I'd like to also add the whole public safety factor to high-density neighborhoods. This is a very, very important aspect that's not only important for my neighborhood, but it's important for the Verona as a whole. Sitting, listening, listening to the Candidas project, there's other projects that have come up in front of the council, high-density neighborhoods bring a huge taxing to public safety. How does Verona want to go in the future? Does Verona want to be a high-density neighborhood, or a high-density city? I strongly urge the council members to come up with a plan. Do we want to be high-density? Public safety takes a huge burden on that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan.
Hello, my name is Lynn Poyce. I live on 505 Military Ridge Drive. I would like to voice my opposition to the Candidas development. My property doesn't butt into this property at all, but I think that the rezoning of the Candinas lot kind of sets a bad precedence that just anybody can come in and, if they feel the need or have the ability to, you know, better their property by changing the zoning, that they can just come and ask to do it. The scale of the development is quite large for the lot, I think, also, and assuming that it does go through as is, I don't know if it's really been looked into, as far as once you have that, the roofing and the pavement and everything, with the area draining off into a sensitive area, the wetlands, like it does, if that's really been looked into. That a forty-foot diameter pond is really going to be able to absorb that much runoff. I don't see it. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Mayor Alders? My name is Roger Raffesberger, and with your permission, I would like to read an email from our household that should have appeared in your inboxes sometime today. But in case no one has had time to look at their emails, or just so that this is aired in public, it's the most concise way to express my thoughts. So this is from my wife, Chris, and I, who is here tonight. "We live at the single-family home at 138 Peoli Street, which is adjacent to the proposed development at 142 Peoli Street. We have resided in our home, maintaining it, paying our taxes, raising our two children, and enjoying our neighborhood for twenty-eight years. This letter is to once again state our and the neighborhood's opposition to the currently proposed development at 142 Peoli Street. If you had had time, we hope you have been able to view the Planning Commission meeting of 12/7, its public comments, and the comments of the Planning Commission members. The proposed development, in our opinion, is an attempt by the developer to exploit the maximum dollar value out of this property with little regard for the neighborhood. We also feel that the neighborhood meetings held by the developer were token gestures, first presenting a massive forty-three-unit building to the neighborhood, after presenting thirty-six units to the Planning Commission and Common Council, presenting a sixty-eight-hundred-square-foot commercial building, then strategically downsizing each slightly and removing a few parking spaces to then claim to be working with the neighborhood. As Mr. Scott Manley stated in the Planning Commission commentary, he did not see this as truly mixed use, but a highly dense apartment building in the back, retail up front with a gigantic asphalt parking lot in between. Also noting that the future property line note on the site plan suggests a future separation of the property, further highlighting this question. If the property is separated at some point in the future, the density will set a precedent of triple the current standard. We would like to point out that this property is not in the downtown development district, where mixed use is used to provide more flexibility to the zoning codes. We feel the proposed development will severely damage our property's worth as a single-family home, and also impair the quality of life in the entire neighborhood. We noticed that last week's Verona Press Police Report featured many calls to the 100 block of Berkeley Road, just across the bike trail. This is more testament to the fact that increased density leads to increased crime. We trust that you have seen the signed statement by members of the neighborhood that represents five hundred and seventy-two years of living on Peoli Street. We recognize that redevelopment in an older, well-established neighborhood can be tricky, but isn't that what zoning codes and restrictions are for, to protect the character and value of the existing neighborhoods? And on Peoli Street, would this be the beginning of the retail-commercial aspect, marching through our property and up the street until it runs into the true downtown? We envision that this commercial retail site, sitting as an island for a long time before that would occur. Thank you for your time and thoughtfulness.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Hello.
My name is Ruth Neff. I live at 151 Peoli Street. I do believe I'm the oldest neighbor in the street. I'd like to ask you all, in your neighborhood, can you wave to everybody? And do you know your neighbors? I do, and I hope that this gets resolved tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Julie Miller. I live at 315 Thompson Street. And following the longest resident here, my husband Al and I are probably the newest residents, we bought the property at 136 Peoli Street five years ago. While we don't live there, we felt very welcomed into that neighborhood. It's a two-flat, we rented out, we're very proud to be part of that neighborhood. My husband Al sent an email, a lengthy email, to Mr. Sayer, and he forwarded, I believe, to each of you, so I won't, I won't go through all of that. I just want to echo all of the feelings here with these neighbors. It is a great neighborhood, and we really feel the density is too high. We recognize that the neighborhood is going to be developed, that lot in particular, there will be something done soon. We just, we have concerns, and we don't think that we can get behind this project as it's presented. We appreciate that Mr. Critter did say that he would work with the immediate neighbors. We would ask that there be fencing. We've got a beautiful backyard, we've got about three-quarters of an acre, beautiful trees. With the way this project is presented, there isn't any green space for all of those people living in the apartments to run their dogs, let their children play. We've got that beautiful backyard, I'm pretty sure where they're going to go. So we would prefer that there be a fence there, just to keep that line there. Our property also sits several feet lower. We do have water runoff issues after the rain we've had over the last few days, even though we've spent thousands of dollars to keep the water out of the building, and we put in a three-foot French drain. I would imagine if you went there right now, we'd have some water standing. So we do have water runoff issues that need to be addressed, and I'm assuming that those will be addressed. So I just want to let you know that we do oppose the project as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Julie Peckin. I live at 107 Peoli Street. Again, I think density is a very critical issue. I think it's going to cause a lot of traffic flow problems, which during school hours with school buses and traffic, I again think police, EMTs, are going to have a harder time getting through, should there be a problem. I think density is a very critical issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
Council and Mayor Hochheimer, my name is Paul Oz. I live at 139 Peoli Street, directly across the street from this proposal. I have the same concerns that everybody who has spoken tonight has about density, traffic, and other things, but one concern I have is that we'll be directly across, my wife Melody bought the house fifteen years ago, I've lived there about ten years. We're going to be directly across the street from this commercial development, and we're going to have this large building staring at us, we're going to have lights from their signage shining in our windows, in our living room, in our bedroom at night, and that is probably my main concern. And I just wanted to say that, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? We normally don't give people a second chance, but...
I'm not going to make, address any more concerns, I just want to make a request. As far as I know, and I think at the Planning Commission, the question was asked, is there a long-term plan for this type of a neighborhood, in particular, the Peoli Street? And if there isn't one, I would like to request that one be set up, so these kind of issues would have some sort of foundation, other than lots of people addressing their individual concerns. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Anyone else that wishes to speak under public comment? Going the third and final time. No one else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will move along on the agenda. Next, we have Agenda Item Number Five, which is approval of minutes from the November 23rd Common Council meeting. Those minutes were included with your packet, what's your pleasure?
Move of approval.
We have a motion by Mr. Diaz, seconded by Mr. Years. Were there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the previous meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval of minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries, and the minutes are approved. Under Mayor's business, I have nothing to add this evening, but I neglected, I wanted to make the statement after the public comment, that I know I'm speaking on behalf of all the Alders and the full council, that we really do appreciate your comments, and we appreciate how professional everybody was here in providing those comments, so thank you very much for that. With that, we will move to the Administrator's Report. Mr. Burns, please.
Yes, thank you. I just have a few brief updates this evening. First, for the Verona Road reconstruction project, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation project, they're holding quarterly open houses on that project, and the next open house will be held this Thursday evening, the seventeenth. That'll be held similar to the last meeting at the Fitchburg Fire Station, number two, at King James Way, from 5:30 to 7:30. They also have information on that project on their website, and they're continuing to hold these open houses to provide updates to the public. I think there have been a lot of questions and a lot of things DOT is continuing to work through, with the questions about the state funding for that project, and that's something we're continuing to monitor. For the city property tax bills, as someone had indicated, the property tax bills were mailed last Friday, I think a lot of residents received them today. City offices are open, open here at City Hall, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. We also accept payments by mail, as well as, we have drop boxes here at City Hall. City offices... City offices will be closed on December 24th, 25th, and January 1st. And finally, the city of Verona has, has been notified by the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission that our request for an urban service area amendment will be on the agenda for their January 14th meeting. There should be a public hearing notice for that meeting coming out very shortly. They have requested and indicated that they would like to hold that meeting here in Verona. They tried to, to hold some of their meetings in other locations. And so, that meeting on January 14th of the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission will actually be held here at City Hall. We'll get additional information out on that meeting. And I believe the CARPC staff report should be available very soon. We're expecting that. Actually, we're expecting that possibly yet today, maybe tomorrow. We'll have that in hand. With that, I'd be open to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Mr. Steiner, please.
No question, but Mr. Burns, I bring a huge thank you for your visit to the senior center last Friday, for our chat and chew. You did an excellent job of filling in the seniors about our projects and our city life, and, and your point of view on how well you like your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Any other comments, questions for Mr. Burns? Seeing none, Mr. Gunlock. We will have the Engineer's Report, please.
Thank you. Most of the public works projects in the city have wrapped up for the winter. The only one that's still ongoing is the North Nine Mound Road, Northern Lights Project. Contractor is currently waiting for traffic signaling equipment to arrive. That was supposedly shipped from the supplier today and should be here this week. Soon as that equipment is on-site, they'll be installing the traffic signals, which will take probably a week to a week and a half, maybe two weeks. Once that signal, uh, equipment is operational, the new intersection will be open to traffic. We'll do a switch over on the north end, or partway up Nine Mound, where they are, the contractor is crossing into the quarry with Phil, and switch the, the traffic, the northbound and southbound traffic over to the new, to the new lanes at that point. So, hopefully, before the 1st of January, that intersection will, will be open to traffic. We will be at the existing Cross Country Road, North Nine Mound intersection. That intersection will go back to a three-legged intersection like it was approximately 10, 12 years ago. Traffic on Nine Mound Road at that point will have the right-of-way and will be through traffic without a stop signs. And Cross Country Road will be stopped. If you wanna go to Epic from Cross Country Road, you'll have to go north for a short distance to get in, to get to the new intersection and the traffic signals, and then turn left at the dedicated left-turn lane and go south into, into Epic. The other item I have this evening is I would like to thank the council for allowing me to be your city engineer over the last year, and wish the council and city staff happy holidays.
Thank you, Mr. Gunlock, and the same to you. Are there questions or comments for Mr. Gunlock? Seeing none, we will move along. Next, we have committee reports. We will begin with the Plan Commission. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is Agenda Item 9A1. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-061, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use at 103 South Main Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow Toot and Kate's Wine Bar to occupy 1,075 square feet of space at 103 South Main Street. The business will serve wine and limited amounts of beer. Limited food will also be provided, including cheese, crackers, and other snacks. Tentatively, the applicant intends to open a business in late winter or early spring. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on December 7, 2015, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there any questions or comments from the Alders? For the Plan Commission or for staff? Mr. Diaz, please.
Thank you. A question and some comments. This is a question for Adam. This was brought up at the Plan Commission meeting. The gentleman who owns a property north of the proposed city parking lot, he had mentioned that he was concerned about potentially people walking to the parking, parking lot, you know, going to his property, and I believe it was mentioned that city staff would be looking to just kinda shield his property and put up a, a barrier. Is that, can I understand that correctly?
Yes, sir. Correct. So, the city owns the, the two former houses behind the south here. We moved, we moved those houses here in, in the fall. Mr. Reader, her Director of Public Works, has been working with that, that property owner regarding that. I know he's met with him at least one occasion to speak about what type of screening and buffering that he would like on that property. From a staff role perspective, we're open to whatever the gentleman would like to have on there, whether it's a combination of fencing or plantings. But, as we get further along in the, kinda the landscaping plan of that project, we're gonna be meeting with him again and finalizing the details of that, but that's something that will be, it will be taken care of.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
Yeah, thank, I just wanna say, I think that's, that's an excellent thing to do. I think we should try to be as, as polite as possible to the adjoining property owner. General comments on the project? I think this is absolutely excellent. I've thought Verona has needed a wine bar for like, I don't know, years, and so it's glad, I'm really happy to see someone actually, actually do it. I'm also happy to hear that they're gonna be featuring Wisconsin wines, which I think are kind of underrepresented in the food and beverage industry, so I just think this is absolutely wonderful, and I, I wish the applicants a lot of success.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Mr. Years, please.
I wanna echo the comments of, of Mr. Diaz there, but I also wanna add that it's exciting to see some growth in the downtown. Especially after the city's done some commitments to, to make the area nicer. It's exciting to see someone moving into the downtown and hopefully making the business community a bit stronger.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Other questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-061. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Agenda Item 9A2. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-062, approving a conditional use permit to allow an indoor commercial entertainment land use at 807 Liberty Drive.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Years. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed conditional use permit would allow Fitness in the 608 to occupy 2,596 square feet of space at 807 Liberty Drive. The Fitness Studio will be located between KSW Construction and Infusion Mixed Martial Arts. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on December 7, 2015, and voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there questions or comments from the council? No questions or comments. The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-062. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder?
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 9A3. I do not plan to make a motion at this time. It is Resolution R-15-063, approving a general development plan for a mixed-use project located at 142 Peaulay Street. Would you like the description?
If you would, please.
Thank you. The proposed general development plan will create a plan unit development, planned development overlay for the property at 142 Peaulay Street. The developer is proposing to construct, I believe, a 32-unit apartment building and a 3,770-square-foot commercial building. In 2013, the city approved plans for a PUD in its property that would have contained a single building with a first floor, 4,660-square-foot restaurant, and 24 apartment units. As part of the 2013 PUD, the city rezoned the property from urban industrial to urban residential. The property head, owner has struggled to find the restaurants, to fill the restaurant space, and is requesting a new PUD. The Plan Commission provided initial review of this project in August of 2015. Comments from the Plan Commission included concerns about the building architecture, the density being too high, the support for splitting the project into two buildings. The Common Council also discussed the project in August of 2015. Comments from the council included concerns about the density, improving the architectural appearance of the building, questions about traffic from development, and questions about how this project fits with the downtown plan. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing December 7, 2015. Comments from the Plan Commission included concerns about the density being too great, the location of the commercial building on Peaulay Street, and discussion about potential postponement of action on the project. The Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend denial of the condition, of the general development plan. The council has final approval for the general, general development plan. If the council would decide to approve this project, staff recommends the following conditions of approval, which are consistent with the recommended conditions that were provided to the Plan Commission. One, any internally illuminated signs or other signs with internal, internal illumination or indirect lights from the back of the letters or sign shall not produce any glare. Internally illuminated signs displaying illuminated copy shall be designed in such a way so that when illuminated, sign appears to have light-colored copy on a dark or non-illuminated background. Number two, the business located within the commercial building shall operate between the hours of 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM. Three, the commercial land use is located in the commercial building shall conform to the allowable uses in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. And four, these are recommendations by staff. If it's approved. Number four is the number of apartments shall be reduced to 32 units.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Before we have any questions or comments, Mr. Sayer, do you have any updated projects or revisions to the plan that you would like to mention?
I think the only thing that I'll mention is that I sent an email, email out this morning from the developer indicating they would like to reduce the, the number of units in the apartment building to 32. Mr. Mr. Critter spoke tonight and kinda reflected that kinda comment of, of the recommendation that came from staff to reduce the, the number of units to 32. So, I, I think that's most likely what you're reviewing tonight, is that request of 32 units, based upon what the applicant said tonight and that email.
Thank you. So, Mr. Years, please.
I guess before I get into my, my feelings on the development, there was a, a question asked during the public comment. I think Mr. Hagan asked the question, and I, I do wanna make sure that the question is answered. What is the purpose to have the, the property line split?
Excuse me, if I'm so allowed to answer that. It really denotes an allocation of land. There's a basis for the parking count for the retail building, and there's a basis for the parking count for the apartment building. So, we have, have X number of stalls on one side of that future property line, and X number of stalls on the other side. It also allocates a land basis for the performer, financial performer of each project. Now, having said that, could it be a future property line? Yes, it could. And there's some advantages of that in terms of financing requirements. There's different avenues and advantages to being able to separate those properties from a financing standpoint. If they were to split, be to split into two properties, does that really change the dynamics of what's happening and what's already developed in, in there? It does not. Nothing else changes.
Thank you. Mr. Diaz?
I have comments, but first a question. At the public, or the neighborhood meeting, we'll say, that was held at the BPNN, the developer was asked about whether there'd be a streetlight at Peaulay and Nine Mound, as well as potential enhanced crossings at the, the trail. And I would like the developer to answer that question, whether they think that there's going to be streetlights at Peaulay and Nine Mound, and whether they think the pedestrian crossing is going to potentially be enhanced based on the development.
I guess I'm not prepared to answer that question. This is part of the public improvement?
Yeah, look, oh, let me, let me clarify what I'm, why I'm asking this. Because at the neighborhood meeting, it sounded like you had said that there wouldn't be a stoplight, and there wouldn't be enhanced pedestrian crossing there. And I'm just wondering if that's what you said, and if so, how would you know?
I don't recall that, but I would anticipate there would not be any enhancement to that intersection in terms of a pedestrian crossway or city street lighting. You may wanna defer to the engineer or the planner for that. No. I just don't see that the, this project's gonna generate the type trips that I think everybody's nervous about.
Thank you. Mr. Gunlock, please.
Yeah, there would not be, at least for the foreseeable future, traffic signals there, if that's what you're getting at. There's already a streetlight, I think, at the corner that lights the street, but there would not be traffic signals.
Go ahead, Mr. Diaz.
I would just like to clarify that that authority relies, goes with the city, and that there might be other reasons besides trip counts that we might put streetlights there. I know some of the driving factor, and when we're putting in streetlights, is, is based on safety. You could have a dangerous intersection that doesn't necessarily have a lot of traffic. You could have a dangerous pedestrian crossing. For example, the one downtown is more, more in response to, less in response to trip counts, and more in response to potential safety issues and, and people driving dangerously around the pedestrian crossing. So, I just wanted to clarify for anyone that like, there could very easily be a, a stoplight or a signal there, based on what the city wants. Onto my general comments about the project. I'm, I'm opposed to this. I actually supported the first PUD, 'cause I thought it was a good project. I thought it would have actually benefited both the neighborhood and the city. I don't feel that way about this one. For the first project, I would've been totally comfortable telling people, like, wait and see, this'll get built. I think it'll be good. I, I wouldn't tell anybody that for this one. I, I think that, yeah, density is one of the main issues, but, but based on all the public comment and my notes from it, I think it goes well beyond, well beyond density. I don't like the way, I don't like the potential, the way it's divided. I mean, that might technically be mixed use, but, but when I think of mixed use, that's not what I think of. I, I think some ideas, like the lighting stuff, I think is a good, good thing. And I think that, you know, potentially adding fences, is, fencing is a good thing, but, but I think the project has, has a long way to go. I'd like to see the density reduced. And I'd like to see it, it change back to something like the first, the first proposal, so I'm not, I can't vote for this.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Mr. Years, please.
I, I'm in agreement with, with Mr. Diaz at this point. I wholeheartedly supported the, the original plan with the 24 apartment units and, and the, the restaurant below, and, and the mixed use. And that's where I'd like to go back to, is I'd like to see a, a single building, true mixed-use development there. And I think you're on the right track originally, and that's something I would support again. But, in, in our packet, it, it mentions you struggled with, with the, with the restaurant portion. And then tonight, I hear that the separate building is also gonna be the same tile restaurant that you had mentioned for the 24, the smaller development. And I'm, I guess one question I would have is, how, why would this be easier to build and get a restaurant in than the smaller development? Yeah, please.
Bill, if you, Bill, would you please use the microphone, please?
When we were trying to get a restaurant in the building next to the bike path, we had some people that were interested in that space, looked at it and everything, and they thought it was great for the summer months. Two of them said that if our location would be up on the corner where there'd be vehicle traffic year-round, they would consider it. But they couldn't latch on to something that was gonna be good for six or seven months out of the year, and then the winter months, there wouldn't be much traffic. So, the bike path was, you know, the big draw originally, and I think, you know, we all kinda liked that plan. It sounded pretty neat, but it's only good for about seven months out of the year. So, after hearing the comments from the people that were looking at that space, telling us that it was up on the corner where there was more cars past the front door, that's the way, when we decided to split that and try that.
Mr. Years?
Yeah, I, I would still, I would love to see you guys come back with another, another idea, more similar to, to the original plan, a single mixed-use building. Because that, that's something that I could support. The way this development stands now, I, I can't support this one.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Mr. Steiner, please.
Thanks, Mayor. During my discussions with constituents on the east side of Peaulay Street, they're all very informative and, and back and forth over a cup of coffee and a, and a bite to eat, and we all agreed that this project should go away. Now, I came back at them. I said, "Well, you know, we should come up with some type of a suggestion to, to help this developer out, because they have a lot of money tied up in this whole deal." And during our bantering, we decided that, you know, there's a development going up at Hemlock and Cross Country right now. And it's a couple buildings that could be put on this lot, and each building would have three townhouses in it. And that would allow people who would like to join the fun of living on Peaulay Street, as we've heard from our neighbors and constituents, to join them, and they would own this property. And I'm, I'm sure that would take some adjustment and, and more money being spent by the developer. But I believe this is something that these people could live with, because it'd be new neighbors. And it sounds like they're having a good time down there, and they've had it for decades, and, and I don't think we should interfere with their fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other questions, comments? Mr. Linder, please.
Yeah, I mean, Mr. Diaz hit a couple of my items. One is the density. If it's a one and a half, roughly one and a half acre lot, that would require, we could potentially put 18 units on that with a...
could potentially put eighteen units on that with our current ordinance. Thirty-two, it's a lot. I'd be more into the twenty-four. If you're going to have a PUD, we give and take a little bit. So I'd be more inclined to the twenty-four range. And I'm not a big fan of division of the buildings either. You know, there's other, I think there could be some other ideas. It just doesn't seem right at this point. I think something should happen there, though. It's a, you know, it's a busy spot, and just, to me, that's just an it. I think it needs to go back to the drawing board.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of points. Luke, you did a great job, I agree. It's listed as a mixed-use development, and, you know, for me, and just, I just Googled the definition for it, and what stands out for me is it's, it function, the building has to be integrated. And for me, the commercial and the residential, the way it's laid out right now, they're not integrated. There's a parking lot separating the two. It's not mixed use. It's really two different developments. I think the lot line really highlights that. So for me, I agree with what Jack has said, reduce the density. Make this mixed use. Don't make it two different developments in one property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. During the public comments, I also heard a few comments along the lines of concerns about increasing commercial down the entire Paola stretch, and thoughts about our long-term plans. I don't know if Bill or Mr. Sayer, if either of you would like to talk about maybe our comprehensive plan and this area's role in that.
Mr. Sayer, please.
Sure. So obviously, we have our downtown plan. This area was not a part of that plan. What the city has done with our long-term planning efforts is we've broken those up into neighborhood plans, so we've adopted our north neighborhood plan. We have our southwest neighborhood plan. We have a variety of neighborhood plans. The reality in the core of the city, and it's the same comment for the Candinas project on the agenda as well, is that we have not done a good job of planning our existing areas. We haven't. That's just the truth of it. Our plan, while it's very thorough, it lacks details on areas that are existing in the city and long-term and planned uses for that. And the short answer to that is, there really isn't that detail in the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. You have additional comments, Ms. Doyle? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. This is just a question back to planning. I mean, even if we did have a plan, there would be, there'd be nothing to prevent a future council from just totally overriding it if they felt like it, because it might not even be the same people in two or three or four years or whatever.
Mr. Sayer?
It would just be amendment to the plan. It'd be a comprehensive plan amendments, and it'd be a change.
So like, it would give people a warning, but there would be no guarantee that if something was zoned, single-family would stay a single-family, is kind of what I'm getting at, because I feel like, is that correct, or?
In essence, yeah. There's, I mean, there's no guarantee ever. Ultimately, you know, who knows what happens in two hundred years from now, I mean, what we're doing. I mean, so to say something will be single-family or industrial or multifamily for, you know, a thousand years or whatever it turns out to be, no. Conceivably, in the near future, you know, most of the properties along Paola are probably single-family or what they are today. That's probably a fair assessment.
I just wanted to make a general comment to people in general, that zoning can change, as I'm sure everyone is aware, and it's kind of unfortunate because ninety-nine times out of a hundred, it's not going to change. It's going to stay the same. And I know that's a small comfort if your neighborhood is the one out of a hundred, but I just wanted to make that clear to everybody.
Permission?
If you're responding to a question?
I was.
Okay.
I wanted to comment in your question in respect to the commercial entity portion of this project.
Go ahead.
And I concur with Mr. Dresser that if I think, if you're concerned about having a dark space, you put that commercial element on the back of that site, tucked up against the bike path, it will go dark. It's just such a tough environment to try to lease back there. I would like to have Mr. Sayer perhaps explain to the council what the option is. I think the entire mixed use was inspired by Bill and his partner in respect to the moratorium that you have on multifamily. I'd like Mr. Sayer maybe to address the council if I could, in terms of the likelihood of this project coming in without the commercial element, and what, how this council would receive that.
If Mr. Sayer feels comfortable in addressing that.
You know what the numbers are, Adam?
Sure. I mean, I'll make a comment that I made similar at the Plan Commission. I think that's what Mr. Critter's referring to. So as everyone knows, the city does have a residential phasing policy in place. What it does is it allocates approximately twenty-five to fifty units that the city can approve each year for apartment units. It's a policy that was put in place in 2012. There are three exemptions to that policy. The first exemption is downtown development, for downtown redevelopment. The second exemption to that is senior housing, and the third exemption to that is mixed use, mixed use housing or mixed use projects. The comment I made to the Plan Commission was, the policy in the city obviously has probably deterred some development, multifamily development from occurring. I think that's probably a fair statement. Most developers, when faced with that, they don't have the greatest reaction, to be honest with you. I think what it's kind of done, and this is the comment I made to the Plan Commission, was it steers developers into three different areas. It steers them downtown, it steers them into senior housing, and it steers them into mixed-use projects. That's what that policy does. It basically, while it provides an incentive that if you're doing one of those projects, you can be exempted from the twenty-five to fifty units per year. So that's kind of what the city kind of has going on right now, is when projects come to me, to be honest, I do steer them towards downtown, I steer them towards senior housing, and I steer them towards mixed-use projects. That's what was laid out in the policy, and that's how I've been directing people, if you're going forward with a project, look at one of these three areas. Obviously, the policy is set up, the council will be more receptive to that. So I think that probably covers what Mr. Critter was looking for.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Yours, please.
Again, mixed use is where I really would like to see this development go. And, you know, I don't want everything to be negative. I mean, I know you're not hearing what you wanted to hear tonight. However, I also know that you're not out here just trying to be successful for yourself. You know, I've known you and your family for a long time, Bill, and you're also a longtime Verona resident. And so I know you're not out here trying to do anything that would be detrimental to the city. And I firmly believe that. And that's why I really want you to come back with something closer to that first development proposed. I think if we work together, we can make something that's successful for you and for the city. And as many of you know, I'm also not against multifamily housing. I think my voting record here on the council proves that. But I think with the two separate buildings, there's not a lot of space there. And it's kind of, it's cramming a lot with the two buildings. So, you know, I really hope you do come back and that we can work some for the project. I'd like to see something there, and I know that you would really like to help the city out as well. So I hope we can continue to work forward and get something done.
Thank you, Mr. Yours. Other questions or comments? Mr. McGilvery, please.
Just a comment. I'm very happy to hear what I've heard from the council tonight. I'm also very happy that the people who came out and spoke tonight took the time to do so. I think it's important for the people who govern to have the input from the people who pay the taxes, and not to say that Mr. Dresser hasn't paid taxes in the city. I know you have. But for us to go against what we've heard tonight, this project as well as the one coming forward, I think would be disingenuous and governing against the will of the people. And I'm happy that you all, while this is a difficult decision for you, have come to the same conclusion I have. The one thing I'd like to remind you, this particular topic about density comes up repeatedly. And whenever high density is brought up, or higher density than we have on the books, we always get the same response from the people who have to live with it. They don't want that if it's an existing area. I understand. We have approved higher-density developments in areas that aren't affected because there's nobody living around them. That's a much different animal than what this is. And the other thing to keep in mind, while this project is saying it's 1.6 acres, it really isn't 1.6 acres. I think Mr. Critter explained that, you know, that property ultimately could get divided up, and what you're talking about is much denser than the eighteen acres, or eighteen units per acre that Jack's talking about. So I'm very happy that you guys have kind of come to the same conclusion on this particular project. I would like us to keep in mind that really, while there may be interest out there from developers to do the higher-density development in the city of Verona, ultimately, the city of Verona gets to decide what, how we want our city to look. And it's very easy to look around and see that Fitchburg, Madison, Middleton, they have embraced a higher density. That's fine. But that is not, to this point, what the city of Verona has chosen to do. So I hope that we keep that in mind, and unless you're getting a lot more emails than I am from people saying they want high density, I'd like to see us keep moving forward in the direction we have and keeping our densities low. Important for you to look at the document here that's in your package tonight. I find it interesting that, under the Plan Commission, all these higher-density units that you're looking at, it's just like I said, I've said in the past, as soon as you say yes to these, it gets used against you in the future. So let's say, let's try to limit this as much as possible. I understand that you have to find a way to develop this piece of property. I think there's probably support for you to do it on that mixed use, as opposed to what you're proposing with this higher density.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Other questions, comments? Mr. Diaz, and then Ms. Doyle.
I just had one question. Is there any way to get the development so it doesn't front onto Paola to have like a setback? So it's kind of setback. Is that a possibility at all for a commercial building or a mixed-use building?
I would have to answer that as a yes, in that that was the original concept that was presented back in 2013, I believe. You know, by the virtue of splitting up the two entities, yes, the most logical place for a commercial portion of this project is definitely on the street. Is there a way? Certainly. Would you want to somehow sort of move the center of gravity of that development closer to Paola Street if you were to recombine those uses? Yes. Does that put it in closer proximity to the neighbors' houses? Yes. So it's just a really difficult balancing act.
Thank you. Ms. Doyle?
Just to follow up to Mr. Sayer's comments, would you say it's a fair assessment, then, that the city's multifamily housing cap is potentially having an inadvertent effect of kind of pushing commercial development in residential areas?
Mr. Sayer?
I don't know if that's an effect. I mean, if you look at Dane County in general right now, all you see is multifamily being built. I mean, the reality is, the reality is you have the largest private employer in Dane County in Verona. So multifamily is going to stay strong, the demand's going to stay strong because of that. The second thing that you have going, that everyone has going nationwide, is you have changing demographics. You have the baby boomers retiring in some cases and looking to move out of their house, downsized, not wanting to buy, so some are renting. You also have the younger generation who doesn't want to buy, who wants the rents. I mean, so you have a couple of things going on with demand, multifamily. Is it getting pushed here in the residential areas because of that? There aren't many multifamily lots in the city right now. I mean, if you wanted me to rattle them off, I could probably do it on one hand. There just aren't that many lots. Now, we do have those planned in the north neighborhood. We most likely will have them planned elsewhere as well, too. But the demand right now in Verona, Fitchburg, Madison, Milton, it's unbelievable. I mean, even if you go out pushing towards Milwaukee, the demand is strong, too. I mean, this, just because of the demographics. But especially in Dane County right now, it is incredibly strong for multifamily. That's my opinion, at least.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. McGilvery?
I have a follow-up question for Mr. Sayer. I wonder if you might tell us right now what our current percentage of single-family versus multifamily is? I think it's a little more than most people realize.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I don't have, I don't have a number of what the percentage is. I think when we did the policy...
It hasn't changed from that, I can tell you.
Was it sixty, forty in the policy? Okay.
Sixty percent single-family, forty percent multifamily, which is not an insignificant amount. You don't see it as much. I mean, you hear a lot about development from Dane County, where they talk about wanting to put things into residential neighborhoods, multifamily in the residential neighborhoods, and I think the city of Verona, over time, has done that quite a bit. But those were planned to go in originally, not after the fact. Every time we've had a contentious discussion about multifamily going into an area, it's because there are people who are living there, and they may have known that there was something coming, but it wasn't going to be as much as it was. Even the one that's up on the north side of town, we approved an amendment to our policy to allow more density than we normally would. I opposed that, it went through. Certainly, it's a good project, it seems to have worked out. But ultimately, we didn't listen to what the people wanted. And we could have, but we did not. And my point with all these things is, why do we have any of these policies if we're not going to stand behind them as far as density goes? Again, I'm not hearing people say, "Please bring more multifamily to the city of Verona." That's just not happening. There may be small groups of it, they're not coming to me. What I hear is they would prefer not to have that, because what was alluded by Mr. Hagan earlier, there are consequences to your services that are required in these multifamily areas. And I just, we'll talk a little bit more about the next project, but I guess I'm done for now.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Other questions or comments? Ms. Doyle?
Sorry, I feel my comments went a little off-base. I was just trying to see if there was maybe a correlation between the increased proposals of mixed-use developments as a way to get around the multifamily cap. So that's why we were seeing a little bit more commercial in residential areas.
Mr. Sayer?
I think you have this project in Candinas, and that's about all you have right now for mixed-use projects. I think you'll have more coming in the future, but I, you know, if there's larger lots someplace and a developer thinks he can possibly get approval, and if it's a mixed-use project or senior housing, I, you know, they're going to take a shot at it. I mean, they're trying to make money, and that's why they're developing property.
Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to add with the policy that at this point, for that target twenty-five to fifty multifamily units, we don't have any allocated for 2016. So there is room under the policy for kind of straight, non-mixed-use multifamily. I think that Mr. Sayer's comments are correct. I think that those are questions we get from developers. I think the reality is right now, as Mr. Sayer indicated, we don't have a lot of existing multifamily lots. That's maybe why it hasn't become a larger issue. That may become a larger issue if we move into new development areas for the city. I also wanted to just clarify for everyone's knowledge about the policy. The policy setting the target is intended as a guideline, and it is flexible, it gives the council the ability that they could approve things outside of that target, but it tried to signify the city's intent. The policy also identifies a target for single-family development of 125 units per year. That also, just because available lots, has not been an issue in recent years. But I think part of the discussion when that policy was adopted was looking at the ratio of single-family and multifamily in the community, recognizing that the market for multifamily is very strong right now. And I think that the council at the time that the policy was adopted was trying to signal an intent that we would prefer to keep a ratio more similar to where we've been historically, rather than seeing a lot more of multifamily relative to the amount of single-family being developed.
Other questions or comments? Just very briefly, and I made my comments last week at the Plan Commission as well, and, you know, we do have the policy, and we've talked about that over a number of meetings. The other thing, you know, Mr. McGilvery talked a little bit about the multifamily. The other thing that we don't know is how many single-family homes are out there that are being rented. And you can, you go on Craigslist any day, or you go on other sites, and there are single-family homes in the city throughout this county that are being rented. So we know that there's a lot of people that are renting not only in multifamily, but also in single-family homes. And I want to make sure that we don't get out of balance on that as well. Nothing wrong with renting. The first two years I lived in the city, I rented as well, before I bought my house, and then I bought a different house. I'd just like to make the comment that we continue to say no when it comes to multifamily. We have a lot of developers that approach us. We're not saying get rid of it completely, but we even recently had a developer in an industrial park that was looking at multifamily homes. And we hear all the time that this is the trend, not only in Dane County in Wisconsin, but nationwide. But what I'm hearing, and I think what Mac and what some of the other people are saying that they're hearing from residents in the city of Verona, that's not what they want here. They don't care what the trends are. They want the single-family homes. Many people have told me, "We moved away from Madison for that very reason, that that we want people in single-family homes and not the high density." So I just wanted to make the point that there's a lot of pressure put on us as far as development and multifamily. And we're saying no in a lot of cases before they ever get to the Plan Commission or they ever get to the Common Council. Are we going to have multifamily in the city? Absolutely. There's a very controversial one, Mr. McIlroy mentioned, on the northern part of the city, and that one's worked out very well after it was approved. In the neighborhood that I live, in Scenic Ridge, we recently had a multifamily facility open up, and there were a lot of concerns in the neighborhood. We really haven't had any problems since that has been opened. There was concern regarding traffic, and traffic patterns have changed there as additional streets were added, and there were other exits and entrances to the neighborhood. So, you know, I think, although that there are some concerns, I don't think the concerns are, you know, traffic concerns and those types of things aren't as severe as a lot of times people are concerned about. And once the projects are built, they're better. But we are less problemsome, but we certainly, we do have a lot of pressure here for multifamily. And again, I'll say, it's not what I'm hearing from people in the city when I talk to them, is that we want more multifamily. That's not what I'm hearing. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? Ms. Ricky, please?
Just because I'm the only one who didn't speak about the Paoli project, I just want to say that I was very excited about the Velocity project that sadly didn't come to fruition. And I can't support this either, mostly because of all the public comment, which I really appreciate hearing and getting emails from people, so to help make a good decision.
Thank you. The other comment that I didn't make, and that is, like a number of the Alders have said, we hope that we can continue to work together and see a project there, a successful project. We all want to see that area developed. And so hopefully, we will see something at some point. We don't have a motion here yet at this point, but Mr. Linder?
Would it be appropriate to do a motion for denial, or would it be appropriate to take no action?
I think it would be most appropriate, since this, you know, the Plan Commission has acted on it, had discussion on it. To leave here this evening and not take action, I don't think is fair to the public and it's not fair to the developer. So I think it would be more appropriate that we take some action. Mr. Linder?
Okay, thank you. I'll make a motion to deny Resolution R-15-063 approving a general development plan for a mixed-use project located at 142 Paoli Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Now, we have motion, we have comments and questions on the motion? Any discussion? Any further discussion or comments? Saying none, the motion before you is to deny Resolution R-15-063. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Agenda Item 9A4. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-064, approving a certified survey map to create three lots located in the southwest corner of Liberty Drive and Fortune Drive.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second? Second by, was it Mr. McIlroy? Mr. McIlroy? Mr. Linder, please?
The proposed certified survey map would subdivide Lot 11 of the Liberty Business Park plot, plat, to create three lots. Lot one of the CSM will contain the existing multi-tenant commercial building that is currently under construction. Lots two and three will contain future commercial uses. The proposed lot sizes meet all zoning requirements. The Plan Commission voted five to zero to recommend approval of the certified survey map.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-064. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Agenda Item 9A5. It is a discussion only for a plan unit development, concept plan for Candinas located at 2435 Old County Highway PB in the town of Verona. Would you like to read?
If you would, Mr. Linder.
Sure. The applicant has submitted a request for a plan unit development concept review at 2435 Old County PB to allow for the expansion of Candinas, twenty townhouse units, and eighteen-hundred-square-foot coffee shop with a drive-up window, five eighteen-hundred-square-foot retail buildings, and a one-hundred-and-twenty-six-seat restaurant. The Plan Commission and Common Council discussed the concept of this property in July of 2015. Comments from the Plan Commission included some commissions supporting the multifamily and other commissions not supporting the multifamily component. In general, the Plan Commission indicated support for additional commercial development in this area. At the July council meeting, six residents from the neighborhood surrounding Candinas spoke in opposition to the concept plan. In general, comments from the council included support for the commercial component of the concept and concerns about the inclusion of multifamily in this development. The council also wanted to make the development more walkable from the surrounding neighborhood. The applicant has held meetings with the neighbors to hear feedback from the surrounding property owners. The most recent neighborhood meeting was held on November nineteenth. The commercial portion of the project remains unchanged from the previous discussion on this project. The previous submission of the multifamily included one twenty-four-unit of building. The current plan provides three separate townhouse building areas with a total of twenty units. The Plan Commission discussed the project at the December seventh, 2015 meeting. Comments from the Plan Commission included concerns about the multifamily. If multifamily is approved, it should be located closer to County Highway PB or in the middle of the site. Encouragement to the applicant to consider mixed-use buildings instead of standalone buildings, and a dislike of the internal trail as it isn't compatible with the internal, with the buffer intent. The council is encouraged to provide feedback and recommendations to the applicant on the concept. No formal motion is required, as this is a concept review of the project.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Questions or comments from the Alders? Mr. Sayer, you want to go first, please?
Yeah, the only comment I'll make is that I did email out a revised concept that was submitted to staff last Friday, and if Andy can put that on the screen right now? Please? Thank you. Just, the developer, as Ms. Holloway indicated tonight, is requesting feedback on this concept. And just to point out the differences here, there are eighteen townhouse units. These two buildings along the western property line, the southern property line, have been split. The one the Plan Commission reviewed, this was one, building of connected townhouses along with this one as well, too. The commercial and restaurant space is unchanged. The trail system from the site plan has also been removed. Additionally, there were some additional elevations included in the packet. These are very similar to the commercial ones that are actually in your packet. Renderings of the townhouse units that were provided just updated based upon the most recent concept. Some basic sketch-up of just how this would look conceptually, looking towards the southwest. Once again, more renderings, and you should have had this in the email. I do have five paper copies, if someone wants a paper copy tonight. But once again, just additional elevations as well, too. So the developer tonight is looking for feedback on this concept. And as staff, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, too.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Mr. Steiner, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Adam, a few questions that I didn't know the answers to, and I want everyone to hear your answers. What's the governing jurisdiction of this property?
The property is currently located in the town of Verona. It is not in the city.
Would you explain to everyone why the city is working on this project or even discussing this project?
Sure. Well, the intent of the developer is to develop this project in the city. The driving force behind that is most likely the potential to have water extended to the site and also sewer, due to the scale of kind of what's being proposed here. It'd be difficult to do this in the town on well and septic. So as part of the process, if the project does go forward, the developer would have to request annexation from the city. As part of that, when the development occurs, the developer would also have to extend municipal services, and that includes the sewer and water.
Why did this developer not go to the town and explain to them what his intent was?
I don't think I can answer that question. I don't, I mean, I think Mr. Candinas could possibly answer that question of...
Well, I don't want to talk to him. I'm very concerned. We have established residents who have built beautiful homes, are raising families, and they bought this property knowing that the property they were living near didn't belong to the city. They thought it would be a candy company for a long time to come, and they were happy with a candy company. Good neighbor, no complaints, smells were good, and their children played safely, they could walk. We are looking at interrupting a way of life. And I'm not sure, for the benefit of one company, that we should even be talking about this. Because if we make changes and the annexation doesn't go through, there's a lot of issues that pop up that I don't want to deal with as an Alder. And I have a lot of respect for this young man and his business. I love his candy, but I think be happy with what you got. You've got a lot of good neighbors out there who love you, too, but they don't like what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Other, Mr., yours, please?
Kind of going off of Mr. Steiner's comments, although I understand his concerns, Mr. Sayer, wouldn't we be having this conversation either way at this body, even if it was being developed in the town due to ETJ?
Mr. Sayer?
Uh, no, you would not. If there is no land division proposed, it would not come to the city. So if the developer went to the town saying he wanted to, you know, commercial or apartments, which actually are allowed as a conditional use in the town, it wouldn't come to the city unless there was a land division. So we have ETJ for land divisions only, not for zoning.
And that leads me to my next question. If it does become part of the city, would that require us to rezone the property no matter what?
Mr. Sayer, please?
You'd have to, you'd have to establish a city zoning on it. So right now, it's zoned, I believe, C1 by Dane County and the town. Anytime any property is brought into the city, it has to be assigned to city zoning classification. So another item on the agenda tonight is an annexation. When we bring it into the city, it gets assigned to zoning classification per city zoning ordinance.
Go ahead, Ms. Yours?
I do have a question for Mr. Candinas. Do you ever expect down the road to want to sell parts of this property off? Do you want to sell some of the commercial land? Do you want to sell any of the townhomes? Or do you see this remaining under your possession?
Thanks for asking the question. I should clarify that I am not the owner. My parents are actually the owner of the property. So there's a limit as far as how much I can say on their behalf, but the interest is to keep the property in the family. And I'm the only heir, so it's logical to think it's going to come to me. So, yes, the idea is to continue to have ownership of the property. I know there was a question that came up on one of the other items on the agenda about, you know, what's going to happen years down the road. I mean, obviously, I can't say what's going to happen in two hundred years or in fifty years, but no, the idea is to keep the property in the family.
So you don't expect to ever sell off the townhomes, make those owned housing rather than rental units?
No, no. I think, you know, we've heard a lot of things tonight about, you know, the market or the demand for apartments. So, you know, I think whether we like it or not, we are subject to what happens around us. I mean, if people want to just buy homes and don't want apartments anymore, it would be foolish to continue to build apartments, or townhomes in our case. I think what's attractive about what we're doing is that it does, they're not apartments anymore. We've really, I think, you know, that's one of the bright spots that came out of the neighborhood meeting is creating homes that melded better with what is around our property. In other words, the other homes. I think, you know, if you look at the drawing or the sketches, you can kind of see that a little bit more.
As I've stated before, and I think when people have called, I've been open and honest with them. You know, I'm not necessarily opposed to multifamily, and I said that here tonight as well. And as I said with the last development, I want to see a development here. I do, I think there are some good parts of it. And I do think multifamily can play a role in that. However, I don't think we're necessarily at that workable compromise with the residents yet. And I want to make sure that we continue to work with them. I don't necessarily want to rush into anything. And then another question, that, those are my multifamily comments. I also have some other questions for you. So the drive around, is that public or private?
The circular drive that essentially goes around the Chocolate Factory right now?
Well, in your proposed development.
Right. That would be a private drive.
And do you plan to build that drive to city standards?
I am not exactly clear what city standards are, and this week I don't have the architect with me.
Mr. Gunlock, would you go over kind of what a standard city street dimensions?
Mr. Gunlock, please?
Well, a standard city street would have curb and gutter on it, would be thirty-six feet face-to-face. If this is a, if, it would also have approximately four inches of asphalt, ten inches of base course, gravel underneath that, have sewer and water in it. If this is going to be a private street, I'm assuming that the width of the street, the travelway, would be at least, at least twenty-four feet wide, and should have curb and gutter in an area that has got this kind of commercial and multifamily development. So, I don't know if that's answered your question, but that's what we'd be looking for.
And again, I don't have the architects here tonight, they were here last week. But, you know, I believe it has curb and gutter as well. I know the, we do have to have the property engineered for the water runoff and all of that aspects to the property, but...
Well, I'm not just concerned with water runoff, I'm also concerned with being able to get emergency apparatus into the facility, making sure they can turn around, that they have easy access to the hydrants. And oftentimes, I think, private streets, some of those concerns get lost. And so I'm not a huge fan of private streets, as you also see later on on the agenda. And so I would strongly encourage you to maybe rethink that and have the street public, or build the street to city standards. And when I say city standards, I want to see width that's acceptable to the city. I want to make sure that the integrity is built to the city. Because I don't, just earlier, we talked about ETJ. And the city of Verona wouldn't necessarily allow something that would possibly be annexed into our city, not built to city standards. So why would we allow that built within our city currently? So those are my comments to you right now. I want you to work more closely with the residents, create a workable compromise with them. I think that's doable. And make sure we have safe streets so that emergency apparatus can get through, so that the police, fire, and EMS can do their jobs, and ultimately, you have a successful subdivision.
If I can comment about the street size and the ability for fire and EMS to get in. We currently have big semi trucks deliver things to the Chocolate Factory, and that will continue to happen. So we do have to, and I think fire trucks are probably in comparable size, or maybe even a little bit smaller than a lot of those delivery trucks are right now. So we are very acutely aware of the needs of, you know, having a road that's going to be able to accommodate larger vehicles. So, thank you.
Mr. Diaz, please?
Thank you. I had some comments and then some questions. To echo what Mr. Yours said about private drives, I'm, while I am fine about with potentially narrower streets, I don't like private streets at all. Because ultimately, the city is responsible for getting emergency vehicles places, and if they're not being maintained, for example, there was a private street in my district, and the sign disappeared. And so there was no sign on it. So like, one package that were being misdelivered, and that's a small thing. But if there was a police or fire response, that could potentially be dangerous. And the city has no, has limited ability to make sure a private developer, private owner, whatever, actually maintains the street. And if you look at the trend of private, excuse me, of private streets across the country, when they start to break down, they typically, whoever's responsible for it tries to turn it back over to the city. And if we're going to end up owning it, you know, maybe the city itself, in twenty-five years, I'd rather just have us own it, properly maintain it from the start. So I, I don't like private drives. I don't necessarily know what might go in there, but some people have talked about a drive-through. I don't like drive-throughs whether, no matter what neighborhood they're in. So I want to get on record for saying that. I also wanted to make a general comment that I think one of the most reasonable requests from, from the neighborhood is about keeping things away from the property line. I think, I think that's a really important thing. I think having a tall building, I mean, that's, I, I always try to evaluate these things on, if this was in my neighborhood, how would I feel? And I, I wouldn't want a building towering over my backyard. I think it's the kind of thing that fundamentally alters how somebody else uses their property. In the same way, if you, if you built a parking lot and there was a bunch of runoff and you caused someone else's property to flood, I feel like those are things that it's entirely reasonable to be concerned about. With that, I will move on to my questions. One is about process. So if we were to annex this, how many votes does it take to annex? Is it a simple majority vote or is it a super majority?
I believe it's a super majority. So it would take six out of the eight.
So it takes six. So I guess this would be a note maybe to the developers is you have no room to spare and you, and, and the process has to be really smooth. And, and the way I look at it is, is if the neighborhood opposition is at the same level, there's no way this is going to pass. You know, it, it, there's, there's no margin for error if you need six votes. And I, I think, more comments, I guess, I think that it, the, the way the process has gone with, with kind of minor incremental changes has actually hurt, hurt you with the neighbors. I feel like it's led to a lack of trust where they feel like their concerns aren't being listened to. And, and I feel like you, you, you get to a point with people where they don't trust you, and then at some point there's nothing you can say and you'll never win them over. And I, I feel like that's, that's bad if you actually want the project to happen. And then I, my, my final thing for now is just, is there any reason it can't be moved back from the property line? In line with my earlier comments and what neighbors have said, that seems like one of the best things you could do is pull it back as, as far as possible from the property line. But I, but in any of the revisions, it seems like if anything, it's gotten closer.
Mr. Sayer, please.
That was, that was one of the items we talked about at Plan Commission, taking a look at a potential concept to cluster the buildings more into the middle. You know, if there was a, a true mixed-use project, if you want to call it, where you have the commercial on the first floor and you potentially could have second, second floor, even taller, multifamily. Taking a look at that, trying to cluster it towards the middle, you know, that would, that would resolve the, the concerns about, you know, having the buildings close to the neighboring properties. It would resolve some of the concerns staff has had regarding parking, of just trying to get those parking uses better tightened up and in. I, I think one of the, one of the challenges here is you have the existing chocolate factory kind of placed right in the middle of the site. I mean, it's, it's very, very challenging to work around that. I mean, if it was a blank slate, it'd be a different conversation. But one of the challenges trying, working around that building. So, but that was a comment that, that did come from the Plan Commission of having the applicant take a look at more of a centralized type development and seeing how that would shake out.
Mr. Diaz, do you have anything else for now? Okay, thank you. Mr. Steiner, please.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Robert. If I remember right, the entrance and exit point of this development lines up with Grandview. Is that correct, Mr. Gunlock?
It's very close. And if it doesn't line up, it would have to line up if this got developed.
And would, would you refresh my memory about the cost of making this an intersection? And who would absorb that cost?
The developer would have to put in the turn lanes, widen the road, do whatever was needed to develop that intersection. And the cost, somewhere is between 100, $250,000, depending on how long the turn lanes had to be.
And, and one more follow-up. Grandview residents have called me about this. And they are very concerned about that traffic on Old PB right now. What would a stoplight do to the flow of traffic on Old PB?
Mr. Gunlock?
Well, a stoplight, a stoplight is going to, is going to back up the traffic on Old PB. There is not enough traffic on Grandview to warrant traffic signals at this intersection. And if you put them in, you would, you would then back up traffic on, on PD, on Old PD. Depending on the timing, there is considerable traffic on, on Old PD. There is probably in excess of 9,000 vehicle trips a day. But see, Grandview probably has 300 or 400 trips. So it does not meet the traffic warrants. And I'm not even sure if this development went in, as it is shown here today, that there would be warrants met from traffic coming out of that development. The 18 or 20 townhouses are only going to create about 200 traffic trips a day. The retail is going to create about 50 vehicle trips per thousand square feet. So you may end up with six or send 700 total vehicle trips out of that development. It does not generate the traffic warrants for a traffic signal.
Thank you.
Mr. Touche, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Alder Steiner, for your questions. It has caused me to ask, what is the tipping point that would require the entrance to line up with Grandview?
Mr. Gunlock, please. Or Mr. Sayer?
They have it lined up right now. Part, part of the comments we've made from the get-go is the entrance would have to be realigned with Grandview. So currently the site plan they've submitted, it's been lined up with Grandview.
Is it, is there a tipping point that requires the turn lanes?
Mr. Gunlock, please.
Just for safety reasons, because of the, the large amount of traffic on PD, you would need dedicated left turn lanes there so that you do not end up with rear-end crashes at this intersection.
So is it safe for me to assume that any development that Mr. Candinus wants to do would require those turn lanes?
Mr. Gunlock?
Any, anything more than that candy factory, yes. I would say anything more than the candy factory you really need to put in turn lanes. A commercial development is going to create amount of traffic. I mean, you're going to, and the residential development creates amount of traffic that you really, if you have one or two cars parked there trying to turn and traffic coming up behind them, the volume of traffic on PD that wants to turn into there then, you really need those left turn lanes and right turn lanes to get the traffic, to get the turning traffic out of the through lane movement. Otherwise you will have rear-end crashes.
So I'm just playing a scenario here. If, if Mr. Candinus chooses to not be annexed, stays with the C1 zoning, puts in a warehouse or something that fits within the current zoning, would he be obligated to put those turn lanes in?
Mr. Gunlock, please.
If he stays in the township, I mean, I think right now, if I'm not mistaken, we have everything annexed on Old PB there except for where his driveway is and what goes up Grandview Drive. I think we, I think the city has annexed in the, the roadway right away. It's under your jurisdiction. So if he is going to develop, put future development in or more development in there, I would say, and they're going to increase the traffic in and out of there, the city would request that they have, you have your turn lanes. I guess we would, we would request that. And with something that we'd have to work out with the town if it stays in the town.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? Ms. Doyle, please.
Thank you. I definitely want to echo Alder Yours and Alder Diaz's sentiments and would encourage you to, the developer, to continue to work with the neighborhood and try to find a just more palatable solution. I've also heard comments that people are definitely concerned about potential noise and car idling from having a drive-through commercial development here. That being said, I would like to say visually and just to introduce kind of a more assortment of housing stock here in Verona. I do appreciate the townhomes being proposed here. We were talking earlier and there aren't many townhomes throughout Verona. This would kind of attract a different type of resident to the community. There's many folks who, for either economic or sustainability reasons, prefer to live in more multifamily type development, and I think that this could potentially attract those users. One thing I'd like to say, just as a general comment from most of the, most of the outreach that I've received from residents has been very forthcoming and very respectful of the development. But I would like to caution that we kind of uphold our hometown moniker and refrain from othering folks who live in multifamily. I know there have been some assertions about safety concerns based on the type of people that live in these sorts of developments. And I would just caution us to stay away from that kind of prejudicial comments because that can be very dangerous as a community. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions? Ms. Reiki, please.
Thank you. Although I'm not personally opposed to multifamily residences, I have been asked by several people to just ask the developer once again to downscale or even eliminate the, like what the possibility would be for eliminating the residential part of this development, if it would be able to, to go through without that. So just asking again, putting it out there.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Mr. McGilroy, please.
Thank you. I was wondering, Mr. Sayer, I know you're not the town planner, but could you tell me what would be allowed under the C1 designation that the town has? I, I know you alluded to it in your report. Not everybody here gets to see that or listening on the TV.
I have it up here. I can rattle it off. It's quite lengthy, but I'd be happy to do that if you want me to.
And I, specific though, I know what, you're going to rattle it off, but specific to this five-acre parcel, which I want to say, I would commend your mother and father for buying the five-acre parcel. I think it showed some vision. You know, they want to develop a business here and in the community of Verona, which I'm very appreciative of. But I think they, they might have seen the writing on the wall at some point and said, hey, having a five-acre parcel and having our, our, our building in the middle of it kind of insulates us from what may happen around us. And I, at this point, it seems like you're getting away from that original vision from maybe what the people who, who bought the property put the, the commercial development more thinking. So again, if you could just answer that, Adam.
Mr. Sayer? Sure. So what I, what I'm looking at right now is the C1 Commercial District fact sheet from, from Dane County. It's on their website, so anyone can pull this up. Permitted uses, they include retail and services uses, including grocery stores, drugstores, hardware stores, appliance and furniture stores, barber shops, beauty shops, without limitation as to size. Self-service laundries and dry cleaning establishments. Warehousing and storage incidental to a permitted use. Medical, dental, and veterinarian clinics. Banks, offices, office buildings, condominium office buildings, not more than two floors to office space. Utility services, I'm not sure what that means. Rooming and boarding houses, bakeries, laundries, dry cleaning plants, printing plants, distribution centers, wholesale businesses, woodworking shops, machine shops, manufacturing and assembly plants, bicycle sales and service, rental businesses except for motor vehicle and construction machinery and equipment, experimental laboratories less than 5,000 square feet, sales and repair of lawn and garden equipment, outdoor games that are not lighted, marinas, off-site parking of motor vehicles, so an off-site parking lot, and crematoriums. So those are the uses that are permitted by right. Like in general, in zoning standpoint, you have permitted uses, but they also have to meet parking standards and a variety of other, other standards that go with it. But in general, those are allowed by right. Conditional use permits, this is a conditional use. These are uses that are allowable, but they have to meet, once again, those standards. They also have to meet the findings of facts. I believe Dane County has a similar system where we have, there's a variety of standards and findings that has to meet before a conditional use permit can be granted.
So before you go into that lengthy one, so this would have to be approved, reviewed and approved by Dane County? Or would the town have jurisdiction because it already has the C1 zoning?
I don't understand the Dane County process, to be honest with you. I believe the town would look at a conditional use permit and they'd recommend to Dane County. Dane County has the ultimate authority. That's, that's my understanding, right now, today.
That's conditional, but for the authorized, for the non-
Permitted uses?
Yep. I believe they would not have to go to Dane County.
I've never been asked that before. I would, I would assume they wouldn't have to, but I, I don't. Dane County has a few more layers to it than we do, so I, I, I don't want to misspeak on that. But usually when it's permitted, it doesn't go as far. I would say that. They probably have to check with the county if Dane County signs off on it. It's probably approved.
Well, one of the only, probably one of the ways that the Dane, Dane County does get approval process is through, if you're putting in a septic system to service a large commercial, that has to be approved by Dane County. But beyond that, I'm, I'm assuming that the building necessarily wouldn't if it meets the standards. So I made it pretty clear earlier where I stood with sticking the multifamily in there after the fact. So I would hope that the, the developer can find a way to work within the constraints of what he's heard tonight from everybody, but also to the community in general. I'm certainly supportive of, of your concerns. Also, I, I would hate to see something less happen there, which would ultimately upset you even more. And I'm not saying that Mr. Candinus would do that, but the potential's there. If, if for some reason he decided to build his, take his business to a different community, that property gets sold and gets developed within the town development process. I mean, I, I realize that it's a probably bigger window than most of you are concerned about, but it is something to be considerate of. And I hope the two parties can find ways to, to come to a, a project that you all can support. Not, but we know it, it's never 100%, but the majority of people can support.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Again, this is not an action item. We're just providing some feedback. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. Just to give you a little feedback, just at the, the project itself, there's a lot going on in this five acres. And I think the, to me, just if you can move the, the multifamily closer to PB or closer to the middle, I think that would help. Just like you said, it just seems like there's a lot going on in there. I don't know if it can be downsized even a little bit, but I'm supportive of something going in here. I mean, I fully respect the property owner to build something on his property. To me, I'm just not quite, I'm not there yet with this one. There's a lot of neat things to it that I think the community could support. But I'm, I'm not comfortable the way it is. I fully understand the positions of, of the residents. It's very close to their house and understands their concerns with, with them being so close. So I would like to see, personally, I would like to see a little less happening in there. The parking looks tough. I don't know. I don't know what word to use. It just, it doesn't look, it looks like you're just putting spots just to meet the requirements, but they don't look very usable to a lot of the locations to me. So those are just a couple of comments.
Thank you, Ms. Linder. Other feedback? Mr. Diaz?
Thank you. I just want to make a general comment. I'm not, I'm not necessarily opposed to multifamily at all. If you look at my voting record, I've definitely voted to approve some of it. I think that, however that being said, I do like our, our, our kind of phasing policy where we don't overbuild. I like it actually both for single-family and for apartments. I think there's a lot of downside to growing too rapidly. I don't think, I don't think you should build in the city like it's a gold rush. So I think that can, that can lead to problems and that failed developments is, is far, far worse than no development. I, I do see a lot of potential at this, this, this site, but I, I think it just has such a long way to go. And I think anything that can be done to win over any of the neighbors, reducing, reducing the scale of the project, getting away from the property lines, I think, I think that's, that's the best kind of thing. So.
Thank you. Mr. Touche, please.
I think I'm the last Alder to speak on this. This is, this borders my district and I've gotten a tremendous amount of feedback and echo almost every comment that's made about the, what, the amount of action that's going on in this project, the, the parking, the trail. I think the trust is the biggest one that's really sitting in with me. And I think it was Luke who brought that up, but I think the residents, we've had two meetings, we've given lots of feedback. There's been some change, but it's, it seems minor. given lots of feedback, there's been some change, but it's, it seems minor, and it seems minor. I mean, I'm sure a lot of thought and energy has gone into it, it definitely looks thought out, but I think if you step back and layer them on top of each other, it still looks the same, and I would really like to see something scaled back, and before it does get to the city and show the residents, and at least try to get some support from your neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Touche. Any additional comments? Seeing none, again, there's no action on this item. We will move to the next item, which is a public hearing on Ordinance 15-866, amending Title 14, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Private Streets. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. All those in favor of opening the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are in the hearing stage. Mr. Years, did you want to provide some initial feedback or not?
This ordinance started in the Public Safety Committee, and I brought it up to the police chief, because there are some areas within the city where we do have private streets, and they can be a burden on the city. You know, we've mentioned some of them before, and I think a lot of it, the way we looked at it came from a public safety standpoint, so the police don't have full jurisdiction, especially in terms of parking, which then can make fire apparatus harder to get to certain areas of the city, you know, maintained, and when the Public Safety and Welfare Committee talked about it, you know, we were thinking if the street looked like it should be public, it should be public. And now, we know that there are areas of the city where private streets are necessary and are okay, Epic being one of those. I don't think anybody would be driving through Epic thinking, through the middle of their campus, thinking this is a private, this is a publicly-owned street. But other areas where, you know, families are living, I think the expectation of city residents is that the city owns the street and maintains the street, and then the city also doesn't have to deal with the burdens later on. I believe it was Alder Diaz earlier pointed out that after these streets start to crumble, it becomes the city's responsibility, almost most likely will become the city's responsibility at some point in time. So, you have the ordinance before you. Two parts of it, really, one saying that if, and Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that extending circumstances, if the area is owned by one person or one entity, the private streets can be there, however, it must be designated as a fire lane on the plat map. That way, we alleviate some of the parking concerns and jurisdiction concerns with the police department.
Thank you, Mr. Years. Mr. Sayer or Mr. Burns, anything to add? We're still in the public hearing stage.
Yeah, my only comment was in the process of the public hearing. We held a public hearing at the Plan Commission. By state statute, when we amend our land division ordinance, we have to hold a public hearing at the common council, so that's why it's a public hearing tonight.
Thank you. So, we're in the public hearing stage. Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone that wishes to speak on this agenda item? What's that? The room emptied, yes. My third time. Anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Seeing no one, I would accept the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second? Second by Ms. Ricky. All in favor of closing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. Public hearing has adjourned. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item up for agenda is, next item is Agenda Item 9A7.
I'm sorry.
We still need action. Oh, okay.
Okay. Yep. Sorry. Go ahead.
Next is Agenda Item 9A7, ordinance regarding Ordinance 15-866, amending Title 14, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances, private streets, what we just talked about. I believe I will not make the motion until this time.
Okay, there is no motion at this point. Mr. Years?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 15-866, amending Title 14, Chapter 1 of the Code of Ordinances Regarding Private Streets.
We have a motion by Mr. Years, is there a second? Second. Second by Ms. Ricky. Mr. Years, anything to add?
Nothing for, I want to, well, yes, I want to thank the Public Safety and Welfare Committee members, as well as Chief Coughlin, Mr. Burns, Mr. Sayer for being part of the conversation, as well as the Plan Commission.
Thank you. Questions or comments on the motion? Mr. Sayer, please.
My only comments on just what the ordinance is doing, you know, doing a few things. One, it's defining what a private street is. Currently, we do not have that definition, so having a clear definition of what it is and what isn't will be beneficial. The second thing is that it does state that they'll only be approved in extraordinary circumstances, so the option is still there, that if there was a project, and who knows what that is, but there is the option that it doesn't ban them outright, but it puts in clear language that they aren't encouraged, and people shouldn't be doing them unless there is an extraordinary circumstance, and if we do approve it, it would be classified as a fire lane. Final thing I just want to point out, make sure everyone's just clear on what this is doing, it's going in the land division ordinance. This only applies in the land division process, so if someone is creating a private street by an outlot, that's when this ordinance would potentially kick in. If a developer is coming forward and it's a larger retail-type development, or even like the Candinas one tonight, and it's one owner and there's no land division, this ordinance does not apply. That's still handled through the Plan Commission and the council through a site design standpoint, so I just want to make sure everyone's clear on that, that this is only applying to the land division process only.
Thank you, Mr. Sayer. Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing no questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve Ordinance 15-866. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. Next is Agenda Item 9A8. I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 15-868, annexing 83.79 acres of land into the city, comma, and 062/0608-093-9640-9.
We have a motion by Mr. Linder, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Years. Did anyone want to make sure that Mr. Linder had all those numbers correctly? Mr. Linder, please.
Thank you. The proposed annexation would add 83.79 acres of land to the city and includes the existing non-metallic mining pit on the east side of Nine Mound Road, the house immediately south of the pit in Nine Mound right-of-way. Both the nine, non-metallic mining pit and house were acquired by the city in 2015 as part of the Nine Mound Road reconstruction project. There are two residents or electors in the existing home at 2799 Mound Road, and those electors have signed the annexation petition. Consistent with state law, the city will pay the town five years' worth of town taxes for this parcel. The proposed annexation is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. The Department Administration has approved the annexation petition as it found the annexation request to be in the public interest. The Plan Commission voted 5 to 0 to recommend the approval of the proposed annexation.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. Are there any questions or comments? Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question on Section 2 about the 80, more relative to the land that the city owns. Under Section 2, it talks about paying the town of Verona five years' worth of taxes. Because the quarry is owned by the city, is that property taxed land now, and will we be paying five years' worth of taxes on it?
Mr. Burns?
Actually, all of the properties, both the residents as well as the quarry are owned by the city at this point. That property will become tax-exempt effective the first of 2016. However, by state law, when the city annexes property, you're required to pay the town five years of what the town taxes were on that property, and that would be based on the valuation as of January 1 of 2015. So, we would be paying those town taxes, even though the property will be coming tax-exempt as owned by the city in 2016.
So, with that, why are we annexing this in 2015? Because if we annex it in 2016, do we avoid the taxes?
No.
We don't. Because...
I...
Go ahead, Mr. Burns.
I think that may be a question and may be an issue. I think there's a couple of reasons why we want to do it this year, and first of all, this is something that the city and Epic have been working on, we have the use agreement there. I think there's a desire to get this property annexed into the city and the road right-of-way. This issue of the town taxes and the payment of that is also something that has come up as an item, as we've had boundary agreement discussions with the town of Verona. It actually became up, came up because there was a situation involving the town of Verona and City of Madison, where property was annexed into the City of Madison because of the time period of when the purchase was made and when the annexation was made, that the town did not receive the full amount of town taxes that they had been anticipating on that property. I think considering that the city has been working in good faith with the town on boundary agreement discussions, and looking at the total purchase price of these properties compared to the relatively small amount of the town taxes, both the reason of trying to get this annexation completed to benefit the project, as well as continuing positive discussions with the town regarding boundary agreements, those are part of the recommendations for doing this at this time. And I should add that that cost is something that we factored in when we looked at the overall purchase price of the property, and that there would be this cost for the five years of the town taxes on the properties.
Thank you.
Mr. Diaz, please.
I just wanted to say I plan on abstaining from this vote.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz. Any additional questions or comments? I'm not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve Resolution, or, excuse me, Ordinance 15-868. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we'll let the record reflect that Mr. Diaz abstained. Mr. Linder, anything else from the Plan Commission?
That is all for tonight. Thank you.
We thank you for being here, following your recent knee surgery, and you held up very well. Thank you.
Try and stick it out to the end here.
All right, thanks, Jack. Next, we have Finance Committee. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9B1, I'll make a motion to approve payment of the monthly bills in the amount of $667,121.22.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the way of explanation, three of the larger items from this month's bills, the first being to AECom Technical Services, Inc., for engineering services related to TIF 7 and the Nine Mound Reconstruction Project. That amount, $87,822.58. The second being to Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance Company for the 2016 insurance liabilities. Amount is $102,342. And lastly, to the Iowa Grant Trucking, Inc., for Liberty Business Park Phase 2, this would be a TIF 6 expense, $66,995.50.
Thank you, Mr. McGilvery. Are there questions or comments on the payment of bills? If not, the motion before you is to approve the payment of bills in the amount totaling All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. Moving on to Item 9B2, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-15-065, withdrawing from the local government property insurance fund and authorizing the city administrator to obtain property insurance through the municipal property insurance company.
We have a motion by Mr. McGilvery, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Doyle. Mr. McGilvery, please.
Thank you. From your packet and the administrator's notes, the city currently receives property insurance through the local government property insurance fund, commonly called LGPIF. The LGPIF is experiencing a shortfall in their reserves, and renewal rates have increased dramatically. While this provision was removed from the final budget, many municipalities have been leaving the LGPIF due to the increases in rates and concerns that it may be eliminated in future years. In response to the state budget proposal to eliminate the LGPIF, three insurers of the governmental entities came together to form the Municipal Property Insurance Corporation, or MPEC. MPEC has been structured to provide a long-term, stable source of property insurance for Wisconsin governmental entities. The city has obtained quotes from the LGPIF and MPIC. The quotes are LGPIF, $53,175, and from MPIC, $36,321. Staff recommends that the city approve a resolution that would authorize the city to withdraw from the local government property insurance fund and to terminate its insurance with the fund effective upon the expiration of the current policy on February 13, 2016. Number two, authorize the city clerk, deputy city clerk, to certify this action to the manager of the local government property insurance fund. And thirdly, to authorize the city administrator to obtain property insurance from the municipal property insurance company and to execute all documents necessary to obtain such insurance. Prior to common council, the Finance Committee did vote to recommend this proposal.
You've heard the background information. Are there any questions or comments from the council? I'm not seeing any. The motion before you is to approve Resolution R-15-065. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. That motion carries. Mr. McGilvery, anything else from the Finance Committee?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Public Works Sewer and Water. Mr. Touche, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Under Item 9C1, I'm making a motion to recommend approving the Design Engineering Services Agreement for the Church Avenue, South Sherman Street, South Marietta Street, Grove Street, and Road Street.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
This agreement is a change order for the Design Service, Design, excuse me, Design Engineering Services Agreement, approved by the common council on September 28 of this year, for survey services for the Church Avenue, Schuman Street, Marietta Street, Grove Street, and Railroad Street Reconstruction Project. This change order is for design services for a project named above. The design service will include complete water main and sanitary sewer replacement, curb and gutter replacement, sidewalk replacement, and sidewalk extensions, minor storm sewer modifications, and replacement of the S fault concrete pavement section, including base course. Services will be formed on a time and materials basis, not to exceed $137,100. This project is currently scheduled for reconstruction in the 2016 and 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing no questions or comments, the motion before you is to approve the Design Engineering Services Agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, please.
Under Item 9C2, I'm making a motion to approve the Liberty Business Park Street and Utility Construction Phase 2 Change Order Number 1 and Project Closeout.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Diaz. Mr. Touche, please.
This change order is an administrative change order to reconcile as-bid quantities and costs with as-constructed quantities for Liberty Park Phase 2 Construction Project performed by Iowa Grant Trucking. The net impact of the change order is a deduction to the contract in the amount of $6,861.96.
Thank you, Mr. Touche. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve Change Order Number 1 for Liberty Business Park Street and Utility Construction Phase 2, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, and that motion carries. Mr. Touche, anything else from Public Works Sewer and Water?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Next, we are on Agenda Item 9D1. Do we have any motions at this time? Ms. Doyle?
For Agenda Item 9D1, just by way of explanation, this is regarding the employment agreement for the city clerk position. During the closed session discussion at the November 23, 2015 council meeting, a lead candidate was identified for the vacant city clerk position. The reference and background checks of this individual have been completed with no issues identified. An employment agreement has been prepared based on direction provided by the mayor and the city council. The candidate has indicated that she is comfortable with the terms of the draft agreement, and we have the ability to go into closed session to discuss the employment agreement and may return to open session to take... return to open session to take action on the agreement. So I will go ahead and make a motion to move into closed session. Let me just pull it up here. So the common council may convene in closed session as authorized by Section 19.851C of the Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of considering employment, promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the common council has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility.
Thank you, Ms. Doyle. We do have a motion. Is there a second to go into closed session?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Linder. This requires a roll call vote. Ms. Lick, if you would, please.
Sorry. Alder Person Steiner?
Aye.
There you go.
Alder Person Touche?
Aye.
Alder Person Years?
Aye.
Alder Person Diaz?
Aye.
Alder Person Doyle?
Aye.
Alder Person Linder?
Aye.
Alder Person McGilvery?
Aye.
We have a unanimous roll call vote to go into closed session.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the employment agreement for the city clerk position.
We have a motion by Ms. Doyle. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Any questions or comments? No questions or comments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried. We are on new business, Agenda Item 101, which is the approval of operator licenses. Ms. Lick, do we have any operator licenses this evening?
We have Devon Schloss and Elizabeth Hunter from Verona Mobile, Donald Dawson from Mr. Bruce Tap House, and Megan Sullivan from Gray's Tide House.
You've heard the application, applicants. What is your pleasure? We have a motion by Mr. Years. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Any questions or comments on the applications? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. Next, we have discussion on possible action regarding appointment of election inspectors for the 2016-17 election term. Ms. Lick, anything to add on that?
You should have received a list in the packet. There are 42 names on the list to be approved for election workers for the coming term.
Thank you. Do we have any motions at this time? Do we have any motions for the approval of the appointment of election inspectors?
I would like to move.
We have a motion by Mr. Touche. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Ricky. Any questions? Mr. Diaz?
I just had a quick question. What are the grounds for approving or not approving? I mean, is this just more or less a formality, or is, I mean, I don't have any problems with anyone on the list, but I'm just, just kind of curious what we're doing.
Mr. Burns, please.
Yeah, it, it, there is a requirement, so it essentially is a procedural requirement that the council, every other year, approve a list of inspe-, election inspectors. The city clerk does have the ability to appoint additional inspectors, so if there would be additional people, and likely with this being a presidential election year, we will be looking for additional inspectors, and then they would be able to be appointed by the clerk during the course of the year. There's also a requirement that if either of the political parties want to submit a list of names, that we take that into consideration. And we did receive a list of three names, I believe, from the Republican Party, and the list does include people that are on that list. So I, I think to answer your question, I, I think it, it's a requirement in, in the statutes, I think it's a procedural item, and I think some of it dates back to when there was more, more of the inspectors that were identified by the two political parties, and they would go to the council for approval. So we're meeting the requirement, but we do anticipate that we'd have additional inspectors being added along the way.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? If not, the motion before you is to approve the appointment of the election inspectors. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. And that motion carries. We are down to announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening? Mr. Steiner, please.
Thank you, Mayor. On December 4, we had a very successful tree lighting event in our downtown, and I want to thank Gary Canalti and WISC TV for bringing their weather report to Central Park. We didn't count them, but it was a packed place. No snow, so Santa had a hitch a ride on the fire department, so we appreciate them for finding him hitchhiking on the edge of town and brought him in. I want to thank the police for governing the traffic and making everything flow so, so very nicely. Our fire department members cooked seven Nesko's of chili over at the senior center, and when the last person went through, they had, they estimated about seven to 10 bowls left. So it was very, very successful. And the last group I want to thank are the members of the senior center administration. They had that place looking wonderful, and they stayed there and monitored and helped people find the bathrooms. Santa overheated, and they got him outside for some fresh air, brought him back in and turned the fireplace off. And the event just was awesome, and it was in our downtown. Probably the third most popular event behind Hometown Days and Homecoming Parade in our downtown. Thank you to everyone who came and who helped make the event very successful.
Thank you, Mr. Steiner. Mr. Touche.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to the Parks Department for the lighting of downtown, what they did with Matt's House, what, I think the streets look great. I was, it was very pleasurable driving downtown at night and seeing the lights, and I think they did an exceptional job this year.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Other questions or comments? If not, this is the only council meeting that we have for the month of December, so we will be, we will have a Christmas and a New Year before that, so wish you the best of holidays and look forward to seeing everyone back after the first of the year. With that, we are ready for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Mr. Years, seconded by Ms. Ricky. All those in favor of adjournment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carried, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.